Good evening, everyone. It's 5:00. And time to call to order our regular monthly board meeting for the month of July. Thank y'all for being here. And we will start by taking a look at the agenda, which is in hard copy on your guests tonight. Any changes we need to make to the agenda? Otherwise, the open for motion that we approve tonight's agenda. Motion? And a second in discussion. All in favor, say aye. You want to oppose, say no. All right. So would you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, board meetings. Board members, rather. You have emails from Ms. Williams. And one of them had minutes from our June meeting. June 5th meeting. Email from Thursday, the 29th. Changes that need to be made to those minutes.
Have the motions approved.
All right, the motion? And a second in discussion. All in favor, say aye. You want to oppose, say no. Great. Also, today, we had an email from Ms. Williams with a dispersment for the month. Haven't had a chance to tell her what to do. Now is a great time.
Does this play clock, are we finished with them? Is that, are we done now? That's the last of that?
Not entirely the last. There'll be some little adjustment stuff here and there, but nothing substantial to that extent.
Like those are the biggest of the, like the law?
Yeah.
Have the motions approved.
Okay, thank you. The motion, the second. Any questions or further discussion? All in favor, say aye. You want to oppose, say no. Thank you. And I was remiss in not starting the meeting by saying we should pass out play cards, right, of who the personnel are, because there have been so many changes from the director throughout the system. I failed to welcome Mr. Jones as our new director of schools. It's been, we've talked about it so much in recent months, but it's great to have you here in the seat. And as we begin our principals' reports, here we go. It continues. Ms. Baker, Ralph Askins Elementary?
Good evening.
Good evening. Glad to have you.
Thank you. So I would like to start out by thanking our students and teachers for our successful summer camp that we had at Askins. We just finished up our last day on June the 29th. And it's evident that learning was taking place, but also the students were just having a great time. I don't know if y'all got to see our pictures that we shared, but it was a really good time. I would also like to thank the different community organization and businesses that came and visited. We had 4H and the Health Department that came and provided lessons for our students. We had Chunky Monkey, the Captain Jimmy's, and Kona Eyes that came for treat time. And then we had our K-9 Police Department, and he brought the dog out and did a presentation for the kids. And then the Fire Department came on our Water Day and provided a lot of fun for our students. And it was a really nice time, and I'd like to thank them for coming, and hopefully they can come out next summer again with us. So for Askins, the open houses have been scheduled. They're going to be held Monday, July 24th, is pre-K through 2nd grade. And then Tuesday, July 25th, is 3rd through 5th. It's 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock that night. Also, we are going to mail out postcards to all the students to let them know who their teacher is before the open house. I'd like to give a shout out to one of our 5th grade teachers, Ms. Laura Beard. She designed the postcard, and they'll get it, and they'll scratch off to reveal their teacher for that night. So that's going to be, I think they'll enjoy that a lot. That's what I have for Askins. Any questions?
No, I was listening to the sidebar conversation. Somebody was having a conversation, and they were saying what a great program they had for the summer, and they really enjoyed it, and a lot of people didn't do those things with the summer school.
Right, right.
And they did not have those activities at their summer school.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I heard the police and fire said they enjoyed it.
Oh, they had, I think they had as much fun as the kids. They had a blast. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Middle school. Well, not as much activity going on as Ralph Askins, so. Just, just hard at it, you know, getting our schedules straightened out, getting personnel worked on. Me and Ms. Frank's been interviewing a couple of RTI teachers. Got a huge shout out to Keith and Lee, our custodians. The building is probably the best looking building in the whole district. It's, they do an excellent job and really work hard at it. Lee's putting on the last coat of wax tomorrow, and he'll be finished with all that, so that's going to be great. Our open house, Ralph As, I mean Ralph Askins.
Transition.
Yeah, transition. The middle school will be the 27th, on that Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00. We look forward to parents coming in, students coming in, and honestly, I'm just ready to, ready to get the students in. That's what I'm looking forward to, just all this other stuff is just, you know, just trying to get everything squared away and scheduled and all that. It's just kind of a headache, but I'm just ready for the kids to come in. So we're looking forward to it.
Well, your wish will come true.
Yes, it will.
We are two weeks from tomorrow.
Yes. That's right. Oh, I know, yeah, we're excited about that, very much so. Any questions? All right. Well, thank y'all so much.
Here I am, yet again. Y'all are keeping Mr. Perrin very busy. So I'm just going to read verbatim. Mr. Perrin apologizes for not being here tonight. He is attending conference this week that centers around inclusion for students needing highly modified instruction or specialized services. I believe he's there with Mr. McCormick's better half. And it also has a component for high school transition for those students, and we're excited to have him there for that training. So we want to take some time to highlight the successes of our students that we've had over the summer. Vincent Ruhlander just finished up his digital ag camp at MTSU, and he was awarded the greenest thumb superlative. Cassie Tito, Akira Askins, Wyatt Prince, and Quentin Pace attended American Legion Boys and Girls State, and they had the opportunity to talk at the banquet and did a great job reflecting on their experiences during their week. And we recently had seven students to successfully complete their two-week CNA training program. They did not take the test. The test is a little pricey. I think it's $150 per student, but they've completed the training, so they're pending taking the test. So this is very exciting and something we should see more in the future as our health science program continues to grow. The T double S double A dead period is now over, and within the next few weeks, our teams will officially begin their fall practices. All of our teams are excited to get their new seasons underway. And we, this one's near and dear to my heart. We are wrapping up student schedules and continue to prepare for the students' return to the building. And I will just say that we have had such an influx of students interested in applying in the dual enrollment. So I'm primarily, and thank God for Betsy Davis and her help and support, but I've been doing a lot of the dual enrollment with Motlow and industrial maintenance. And I'm telling you guys, our students are industry-ready and college-bound-ready. So very excited about our dual enrollment progress and process. Our custodians, Ms. April and Ms. Frances, have continued to do a great job getting the building ready and have the school looking great for the new year, and it does look wonderful. And then, of course, we thank you for your support as we continue to learn and grow and to make a positive impact on our students as they transition to their post-secondary lives. And we've had several students coming, we're having an influx of students coming from different areas to enroll in our school. So we're excited that we think enrollment will increase some, and that's it. Do I have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, board members, next on your agenda, you see a new item we talked about briefly in last month, and that is a time for public comment. Our board policy 1 dot 1, 1 dot 404 is how members of the public can ask to speak to the board. And new state law requires that, I guess, all elected bodies, because I would see boards doing this as well under this new state law. So we can, we can, the board can decide the terms and the requirements and the length and all the, and whatnot, where it appears on the agenda and whatnot, but we just need to allow this. We did not have anyone asked to speak tonight, but I thought just as a setting of precedent, here it is on the agenda. And it is a reminder that it's not an open-mic night for the period of public comment. It's a requirement that you sign up in advance in accordance with board policy 1 point 404. So if members of the public wish to speak at the August meeting or if you don't have that opportunity and can register their intent with the school system.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd say is we made ours say it had to be on the agenda that night, where it couldn't just be something random coming out on you, so.
That's right.
I think that would be good, that can address matters only agenda.
That's right, that's right. So that can be a requirement if the board so chooses going forward, that we can certainly do that, so. Okay, supervisors' reports. Ms. Dodson is not, okay?
I'm feeling for Ms. Dodson.
Ms. Dodson is out of era training.
Okay.
So she asked me to ask your approval on the math adoption. The math adoption went on this year. These are all state board-approved. We had teachers committees from Askins, Ralph Askins, and High School that reviewed all the books in the curriculum. Our K-5 chose the I-Ready classroom math, and then the 6th through 8th in algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. They both went with Envision math, so we just have to have your approval on that adoption for the new school year. And I think we have something to sign.
Yes. We do need a board motion to adopt that. Okay, got a motion?
Yes.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. You want to oppose, say no. Super.
That's it.
That's it. Mr. Giffen?
Did you say it's two weeks in our breakfast?
Two weeks from tomorrow. Oppose, you don't get a summer, right? You work with summer.
Yeah. Okay, so with, most of my work has been, is around Skyward right now, as we're trying to get all the teachers and the students in and make sure that the schedules are in. We do have the online enrollment for returning students going right now. Training tomorrow for the new student enrollment, I told you about the last board meeting, so we're excited to get that in place. Not sure exactly when we'll implement that, how quickly we can get that implemented, but there's three trainings before I can actually turn it on. So start that tomorrow and then a couple more, and hopefully we'll have it in place as school starts, but that's going well. Tara Painter has been hired, and somebody met Tara earlier this afternoon. She's working Technology Department, and Mr. Bedingfield has left, so Tara is going to be, is our technology coordinator now and be working with me with that. So excited to have Tara. She's going to do a phenomenal, phenomenal job. And then also, other things we're working on is, we use this program called Clever. I don't know if I've ever talked to you guys about that before, but what it does is it takes all of our applications that we use, all the learning applications, and ties it into the student information system, and then the kids can log in, and all the icons are there. And when they click, it automatically logs them into these different applications, and it's a really neat program. So we've got a lot of work to do on that as well as we're getting ready. So I'm going to be living at the schools, doing scheduling and all these things as we get ready. Got a lot of new folks that are kind of new in that job, so be helping them out a bunch. So kind of what I'm going to be working on. Y'all have any questions about anything, or?
Is our current enrollment?
I don't know exactly right now, because Jennifer, when, and I've got it set up. When they enroll a child at any of the three schools, I get an email. Actually, it sends out several emails to different people, but Jennifer's throwing in the pre-Ks right now, and they're just, and new students. So I'm just getting emails stacked up on top of each other, so I don't have an exact count. It's changing, changing daily. But the numbers, as far as what we've been talking about with the principals, as far as staff and things, look pretty good at Askins and High School and stuff, so. Anyone else?
And I guess the work that you've been doing to make sure we're essentially billing the state for every hour, for every credit that a student is being taught.
That's correct.
Is, we know how important that is, and I guess under the TISA, we were discussing earlier with Ms. Williams, that under the TISA model, our funding is going to be determined on a monthly basis.
That's correct.
At all keys to these, this work that you're doing.
Yeah, the coding, yeah.
For ensuring we are billing 100%.
It's the ADM, which is the minutes that the kids have, the average daily minutes they have, plus the coding. So if we have kids that fit into different categories, it's important that we get them coded correctly. So, and that's everything from transportation to special education to, you know, 100 other things that we try to code to make sure that we get all that as correct as possible, so.
Thank you for your passion. No, I mean that sincerely. I like blood.
You're welcome. Thank y'all very much.
Dr. Stone?
Well, I can say with pre-K, our numbers are looking very good. We're about seven shy of being to capacity. So we'll continue to enroll into the second week of September, so I feel like we will be there. And I'm very impressed with Brittany. She's done a great job to help promote that. I've also talked to Lincoln County's pre-K teachers, and I think we're going to try to join together and do some training for our new curriculum, and so I'm excited about that. We did get our, the grant that I wrote. It was the Stronger Connections Grant, and I asked for 1.3 million, and we got 1.1. So that will allow us to hire three social workers, one at each school. And then we'll also be able to hire, to create contracts with mental health counselors and behavioral specialists. So the money will be used wisely, and we're very excited about. We've already had a lot of applications come in for the social worker positions, so. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And it will also support our student advisory team. So we're placing the student advisory process in each of the schools, so we hope to see that grow and develop, and I think our social workers will be a great, a great resource for that. Yeah.
I'm very much of Claudia. She put that on her shoulders, did everything independently, and I'm very pleased with the result. It's going to be impactful for the students. It's great. But we're not only getting a lot of interest, we're getting interest from good quality professionals. So it's going to be, you know, three years of that availability. It's life-changing, especially with the younger ages. It's great.
Right. And just like we've talked about in our former meetings with the, when we have chronic absenteeism and we're taking students to court, that, those social workers will be there to work between the family and school. So that's, that's going to be a great resource for us. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Fantastic. All right, Ms. Jean, you can come to yourself.
I don't have a lot to tell you, being still pulling out the row. I will tell you that we have a new platform that we're learning called Ten Pulse. Our IPs are housed in, going to be housed in the new Ten Pulse, so all of our special education teachers will be trained in that. Sarah and I and some of our other teachers are going next week, and then we'll be doing training once the in-service starts, so that'll be new. We'll have our dyslexic students, they will have an individualized learning plan as well with that. Our 504s will also be on that platform, whereas they've just been paper before, so all that will be housed in the Ten Pulse. So we're excited about that, if we can ever get into it. It's not open for us yet. It's supposed to be, but it's not, but we'll get there, so.
And it's TM Pulse? Okay, how about 10 Pulse?
Do I have any questions for me?
If you need to leave that form for me to sign and leave Mr. Jones, you need to.
I think you got it.
Oh, okay. We got you covered.
Thank you.
Mr. McCormick?
I don't know it. All right, so since end of May, first of June, I've kind of taken on a lot of the stuff with virtual school. And as my good Irish luck would have it, we did submit our initial application in May, which it was denied. But it's not uncommon for virtual schools to have to go through this process, because a lot of times they're using a different curriculum than what the state has already approved. So where we are in the year, based on when we submitted, we do have to fill out a waiver. We have submitted that. That was sent to the commissioner's office, which, as you well know, since June, they've had some transition. So that has slowed our process somewhat. So in anticipation for that, I reached out last week to just kind of see where we were at. So I talked to Matt Bowser, who is kind of over virtual schools in Tennessee, which then led me to contact the commissioner's office to see where we were in the process. So they're currently trying to see exactly where we are. Our waiver is there, but it has to be signed by the commissioner, and then that will then go on to TSBA. TSBA won't meet until August, is my understanding. So best possible case scenario, we could get approval in August. Matt did kind of communicate to me that because of this process, and there's so many new virtual schools that are trying to kind of get off the ground, that that could be a lengthier process. In some cases, it takes up to a year, which, again, is obviously not ideal. We were hoping for a better outcome, but that's kind of where we are at that point. In the meantime, what we're trying to do is, I spent a lot of time looking at the course codes and the programs of study. I feel like those are set up to where we can meet the graduation requirements. Elementary and middle school, most of that's pretty cut and dry. Like, you kind of know what that is. It's when you start getting into high school that you have to know a little bit more about the courses and the requirements and so forth. So I feel good about where we're at on some of that. There's still some fine tuning that needs to be done with a couple of courses, but we're starting to work on handbooks, because with virtual schools, the handbook needs to look a little bit different. But then we're still adding the boards and policies and procedures that we need like we would for all of our brick and mortar as well. So a lot of work going on there. Again, not ideally what I would like to be standing up here reporting tonight, because I kind of hope we'd be further along. But all things being what they are, I mean, I've gotten some good information. I feel good about where we're at. It's just unfortunate that we're kind of where we are tonight, so. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Williams?
I have the June revenue and expenditure reports that were emailed to you earlier, and they were just for review and just, any questions?
And those, as we discussed earlier, the finance committee will be, will adjust, even though it's kind of end of year, the FY that ended June 30th, it won't be, there will be some adjustments as revenues continue to come in from the state and expenditures continue to be processed, so.
Yes, and so this will be updated beginning next month. We will have the current fiscal year and then June 30th, '23 fiscal years, and those numbers will be continually updated until the audit.
Until the audit really officially closes out the budget cycle for us later.
Cool. Any questions about the financial reports? Still appreciating what you do there, of course, that's, that's good. Is that all?
That's all.
Okay. Facilities, transportation, committees, anything?
Yes, sir, I'd like to share, or a bit, on the cosmetology room. It has come along really nicely. It's been painted, flooring, they've put cabinets in today. Probably haven't completed that today, but I don't know that we're working on it. Some finished lighting, and then it'll be in pretty good shape. We are looking at some of the basins that were going to be moved and put into the new facility. That's probably not going to be realistic to reuse those. They've been moved twice already, and so we'll look at what we need to do. If there's ground availability, or if we just need to purchase those out of GP or something. But it is coming along very nicely. Members of the facilities committee, we were able to tour that, and I think they would probably agree that it's going to be pretty nice. And as the cost savings, it's going to be fantastic. Pretty pleased with it. Moving on to transportation, well, before I do that, there has been no movement on the FEMA project whatsoever since the last time we, absolutely no movement. I'll report more as we know more, but I'll keep you apprised of whether we've heard anything. It's been completely still waters since last month, so.
And not just our project?
No, it's.
The tennis projects across Tennessee are sitting at our regional office, right?
Yeah, the general idea is that it is stopped at a desk in Atlanta, and it has to do with projects of this nature, not to our scale, but they are always projects of this nature. And TMA guidance was to go about it in a certain path, which had been traditional post-COVID. It was realized that the best strategy would be to switch it to another path, and so they bundled these up and sent them to the feds. So FEMA has a package. So our stuff is in, even though we've already been approved, and we would actually be in phase two when they approve us, we're in a file with a bunch of others, so there's, it is what it is. Hopefully, we'll get good news soon, and we're looking forward to some potential political help. We have reached out, you know, like I said, to Scott Majora's office, and I'm looking forward to hearing good news from them that they've communicated with them hopefully in the very near future. On to transportation, everything's going pretty smoothly. Got the buses maintained and ready to go. Johnny Flint Jr. has resigned. He has, he's, it's very stringent to be able to pass, to have a CDL and transport students, and his hearing has become an issue, so he has asked that he be able to resign, and he is going to be taking a job as a custodian, I believe, in Marshall County. So, well, Ms. Johnny, he did a lot of good work for us, drove the kids safely, and was always available to help if we needed him in a pinch, so we wish him well. That is the general facilities and transportation report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Any other comments from committee members? I saw you both acknowledged that it really looked, cosmetology really looks nice.
And the middle school was really, really nice.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah. They did a great job of the floors and the high school as well.
Super. Okay, Finance Committee has a few items. They should be fairly quick. I think we need to approve Mr. Jones to have authority to file necessary amendments and fund transfers for federal projects for the '23, '24 school year, given the transition directors. So I would make a motion if we approve that. Got a second? Any questions about what we're bringing here? It's pretty clear. All right. All in favor, say aye. You want to oppose, say no. Great. Then we have three budget amendments tonight. Sorry, they're in different order than we talked about in the finance, so I was getting this. The first one is FY '23 line. First one is FY twenty-three line item amendment uh number three to the cafeteria fund. And I'll just tell you, all three of these are, remember, we just passed the June thirtieth closeout of the FY, and so it's literally just cleaning up budget lines in the, in last year's budget. So no new revenues, no new expenditures, just, just cleaning up the budget line. So I would make a motion that we approve amendment number three with cafeteria budget for FY twenty-three. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. And then we also have uh line item amendment number six to general purpose fund. Um, and once again, it is a um, a, a line item, so this will just be something our board can change because we're literally just cleaning up budget lines at the end of the FY. I would make a motion we approve that amendment. Got a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Great. And then the final one is uh budget amendment uh number six to the general purpose fund. Uh, that, this one, again, is cleaning up lines, but it will cross some categories, so we'll have to also get the city approval on this. Appreciate Mr. Alder taking that to the next city board meeting to, to clean this up. Again, no new revenues, no new expenditures, just cleaning up end of year matters that cross categories. So I would make a motion that we approve FY twenty-three budget amendment number six to the general purpose fund. Alright, got a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. And then we are going to be approving supplements tonight, and I think Mr. Jones is gonna uh expound on that.
Yes, we have our typical supplements, which uh, you know, we can insert with what we've done in the past. Uh, different administrative supplements, sports coaching supplements, and things of that nature. I'd also ask that the board approve a number of supplements that will help kinda break up some of the responsibilities that we've had generally centralized at the office up here. Uh, some of those, I feel like it could be more cost effective, and I'm currently researching the appropriate policies, procedures, and legalities of, of the different roles. Uh, as soon as I know everything's copacetic with those, I would like to try to um, within the scope of the school system, find personnel to do responsibilities such as system athletic director, the transportation supervisor, testing, so system-wide testing coordinator, uh, someone to be over teacher licensure, also someone to be over textbooks. Um, if you look in the packet, um, those supplements are listed there. They're generally close to the same amount. Um, there's one that was, you know, a third what the others are, but it is also uh much less intensive as far as the level of responsibility or the level of uh work required in the course of a year. Now, as we continue, there may be other things that would come up, um, that it may occur to us that uh there might be other tasks or responsibilities that would be in good for this. Before we did that, we would obviously bring that back to the board for uh, you know, conditional approval with that time. Um, but I would like for y'all to look at those roles, look at the numbers, and see if that's something y'all approve of.
I do have a question. There is a footnote on one of the supplements that relates to uh desire by Mr. Hopkins. And I just wanna make sure we're, since the Mr. Hopkins era has ended, uh, should we assume that's also your, or it's still approving the supplement, uh, even though there's a footnote?
I would like to approve the supplement as is, and then uh have the note remain uh so that it will be true. If that's something that we did decide to do, um, we would have it approved at that point. You know, that everyone knows that that happens, something that we reduce.
So we could, we could approve these and strike that footnote essentially, just that it's, we're, yeah, yeah, if the board so chooses. Alright, any questions or comments about the supplements that are proposed?
Was this in our email or about over?
It was, uh, totally the twenty-nine.
Yeah, but whatever I had to.
I haven't seen it, so I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. It's, it's just due dates and uh you can take it.
So is this a new amount from like previous years?
Have the amounts changed?
Has the amount changed?
Not to my knowledge. It should be the same. Everything should be exactly like it was last year, with the exception of the proposed supplements.
The, yeah.
The system's.
So as the athletic director, 'cause I'm new here, I'm not a hard person, um, do they have to attend all of the functions?
No, um, the system-wide, that's a responsibility that I, I've had in the past, and uh Ron Penn had had at one point. Um, it has to do more with memorizing and knowing the two double S double A in the middle school standards and the bylaws and meeting with the group and then trying to be a liaison with those organizations to make sure that we're compliant, uh, building roads, uh, also make sure that any of our paperwork or landings happens in the course of a ballgame or something like that. Coordination of those. So we have building level people who uh make the schedules and get this, the um managers ready and the people ready to come do officiating, but this is another level above that that is kind of the, the law part, so.
Are they doing, like, these individuals that would take these specific things, are they doing this embedded within their school day?
Yes. Yeah, they would uh, it would be something that they would take time generally. Most of the jobs and tasks involved would be something that you could do in, say, one planning period, a week, something like that. Some of them wouldn't even require that much work. That being said, though, um, the expectation would be, rather than take the time out of the school day that they would, if they're gonna utilize planning to do it, then they would plan for another, you know. They have to, it has to come out of their work at some point. It is additional work, so there will be additional time. It just won't be mandated, you know, Thursdays from four to five or something like that. But there will be a work for it, that will come with it.
So they're not gonna have like an additional planning?
No, no, no. Some of them, if it works for some of them that need it, then that would be fine. But most of the time, it wouldn't be, certainly for something like books, that it wouldn't be necessary.
So we would be looking at, if the board so chose, we'd be approving the supplements for FMS, FHS, and the system. And as a, as a motion if the board so chose.
And so like these individual, um, like just, would they all, like their superior would be you? Like, who would be the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
So they all have like a si, come back as a central, you know?
Yeah, it's, these are basically central office type responsibilities for something like that that would need to report to me. Um, they may have someone else, um, another supervisor that they interact with. Uh, for example, you know, Books is gonna go really closely with what Claudia's doing, so she would work with that person, but they're gonna be responsible to reporting any of their stuff to me.
So like, there'll be a layer, like if it's, um, Books, they're gonna have this, then you, or they're gonna have a sub?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that, I think that's a great idea, honestly. I think the only concern is just that, like we, if they don't get lost in the, if they're accountable and have that, you know?
Yeah, well, that, the, one of the key ideas with this is that by giving one, a person a responsibility like this, um, the group will be able to, it's like, you know, um, I, I think I've, you know, accomplished all of the tasks as a supervisor um, at a proficient level. At the same time, if I had been just focused on transportation, it would be better than what I was able to do with it, you know, with five or six responsibilities. So I think that's, that's the desired end is to elevate these programs and, and to share some of the uh availability of administrative responsibility with some really talented people that we have, um, who I believe could use the product, the financial reward and the acknowledgement of their capability.
And maybe even part of that, to your point, accountability and uh whatnot would be, some of these to even address the board on occasions when appropriate.
Well, there would, yeah, there.
To report on that progress.
Obviously, Books would have been like an opportunity to have someone interact, though.
There's, yes, there'll be some milestones in the student year when they need to report to.
They probably wouldn't be part of the core group every year, but, but on occasion, they would circle and come in and give a report.
That's a great concept. Okay.
Make a motion for the supplements?
Okay, you have a motion? And a second. Any further discussion or question? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. That'll be great to see how that unfolds over time. Insurance and policy. It's blank.
It's blank. We don't have anything tonight.
Okay.
We supposedly rescheduled. We're not rescheduled yet, so.
That's okay. Yeah, it's okay. Superintendent's report. Mr. Jones?
Alright, thank you. Um, I'll start off by just going over a quick overview of some of the movement that we've had within the system. Um, summers are always a time when there's changes, and I wanna make sure that you all are kept aware of the vast majority of them. There's still a lot going on. Um, so between now and the time school starts, we will, you know, at least three positions are open to be hired. Um, so that'll be some changes. But for the time being, uh, some of the, the hot points are, um, we've, as Steve mentioned, we brought Tara Painter in to help us with technology. She'll be working with Steve and Tammy. Um, TSS Phelps, who's been with us, is going to be working as the Europe person. So where Mandy Pitts has served for that in the past, Mandy's retiring, uh, she is uh vacating that position. TSS is gonna be taking over. Um, we've got Brittany at RAS with Heather Bradley as an assistant. Along with them, we've got Maggie Buchanan, who is a tire. She's coming in. She's gonna be going to pre-k. Miss Maggie Warren is going to, she's requested a transfer from Fayetteville Middle to Ralph Askins. And Maggie's fantastic. Uh, I would, we've granted that, so she will be going into fourth grade, I believe. Um, Mr. Ron Kerbo is coming in as a custodian at Ralph Askins. Uh, we're excited.
At Askins?
At Ralph Askins, yeah. And then Chester Lindsay, who had been with us at one point, uh, he has decided that he would come back. So we've got Mr. Anthony, uh, Mr. Ron, and Mr. Chester are, will be the staff um at Ralph Askins, which brings me top, you know, top of mind, uh, um, Ms. Cherry that works at Ralph Askins in the, uh, she's currently in the cafeteria, but she has been part of the custodian staff. Um, she has had an injury, and so I'd like for y'all to hear her, she's a really fantastic lady, um, good person, has done a lot of good for her kids. But uh hopefully she'll be recovered and uh be able to come join us pretty shortly before the school year's up. But I know that she has had an injury, and we'd like to keep her in our thoughts. Um, moving, moving along, at Fayetteville Middle, Ms. Laura Frame, who was like an intervention RTI uh staff, she has moved into the academic coach position at the middle school. Um, and then at Fayetteville High School, Ms. Betsy Davis, who's math personnel, fantastic educator, uh, she's gonna be our academic guidance counselor, um, and kind of student services person. So all of the different, like dual credit, dual enrollment, um, where all of those programs kinda meet with our academics and our schedule, Betsy will be the person who's guiding our students through that process and putting them in the best possible, possible uh positions to be successful. I feel like she's very capable. I'm excited to have her in that role. I'll, I'll have a number more positions and movements to share with you in the future. Um, we're excited. Um, what we hate than Ms. Holly is leaking girls' basketball. We are very excited that Coach Fitzgerald Hopkins is gonna come in and take over our girls' basketball program. And uh, uh, I've heard a lot of excitement about that as we, as the board has gotten out and uh people in the community have contacted me. Uh, I think, you know, we're going from strength to strength, so. And with, you know, it's nice to have good, capable people within the system that we, that we feel struggling about uh bringing in and giving added responsibility and opportunity to really do some fantastic things. At this time, I'll move on to the, the lines on the agenda. Um, I would ask the board to approve the resignation of Ms. Annette Wilkerson, a tenured teacher, who's fantastic and beloved and did a wonderful job educating two of my children. I will miss her very much.
Got a motion?
Sure.
These are hard motions, again, because you hate to see people, but we understand the circumstances in, in life, so. Uh, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
Um, on the same line of thought, uh, please approve the resignation of Wendy Butler, a tenured teacher. Who's also done a fantastic job for a number of years and put our beta and stuff at a national level. She's been.
Goes out on a real high note.
Yeah, very high.
She's a worship. She really does.
So.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
And uh the last uh two points from my report, I'd like to remind everyone that we'll have our staff breakfast on July twenty-fifth at seven thirty AM. Um, that is our, our dress-up first breakfast of the school year, and it'll be at First Baptist Church. Again, that's July twenty-fifth, seven thirty AM. Um, and then our staff cookout is gonna be on Thursday, July twenty-seventh at eleven thirty AM, and I'll go from eleven thirty to one, and that'll be at the middle school. And that concludes my report.
Yeah, the school year is close, and we're planning the cookout, right? That's, that's an exciting tradition. Thank you. Um, well, it occurred to me this afternoon when I got here that I am were missing not nailing down uh performance expectations. Uh, by con, by contract with our director of schools, we uh, we will get expectations to you ASAP. And then, of course, in May, we, the contract stipulates that we'll have an evaluation during the month of May and uh proceed on a yearly cycle. So I'll get those out to the board for your consideration uh and dra, just a draft version for you to review and, and let's see where we wanna go for this, uh, for this cycle. And hopefully, although we, we will, at the August meeting, we really need to, we owe it to our director to make sure he understands the expectations under which he is laboring. Yes, we are confident you will. Um, and the last thing I had was our, that our August board meeting would ordinarily happen on Monday, August seventh, which the great thing is, it's not the first day of school. So we won't have principals uh with a crazy day come and do a board meeting. I assume that's gonna work with everybody to do our board meeting as it would have happened ordinarily. First Monday. Okay? That's what we're planning. Any, any parting words before we close?
You know the thing that we had talked about in those last, like, in our last final transition conversation with Mr. Hopkins as he was leaving about that there was some time left that maybe we had with, um, the Bailey Group?
The Bailey Group, yes, yeah.
And he had said that if, if the board chose, or if Mr. Jones chose to do that, we could use one of those sessions as like a, like a, to update our five-year plan kind of thing?
We, we actually have used those. Um, it's since that time, they've come in because we did, needed to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. So we utilize those. But we do, if you want to take a moment to go into uh the director's office, uh, we have big post-its of where the different ideas of the plan were and ideas for future input. So we did work on that to, to some extent. So we got some good use out of it. Uh, then we're also able to interact and talk with the principals, everybody getting new in their positions, even though they were familiar with them. It was kind of a nice opportunity for them to touch base and help answer questions or help them with the. and help answer questions or help them with the resources to shore up the starting position within their new role. That's, that's great.
That's good.
I'm glad you brought that up because it hadn't occurred to me to, to mention that we were going to utilize those, and we did get our money out of it, so it's good.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks. Anything else?
Now that we have our law conferences.
The law conference is this?
Next week.
Next weekend, that's right. Yeah, all day Friday, the 21st, and half a day Saturday, the 22nd in Gallenburg. For those who are planning to attend, I think all the arrangements are made. You should have had an email from Ms. Williams with all the arrangements and hotel reservations. That's TSBA annual law, summer law conference, which is, of course, school board members are required, and we know this, required to have eight hours of training every year. And so this is one of the ways, one of the choices. There are many choices, but this is one of the choices we can make. And it usually provides some great new insights into what happened in legislature and what's about to happen next January, because it's not far off before they meet again. So any changes to your schedules, please let Ms. Williams know ASAP so we don't get hung with hotel reservations that we have to pay for that don't, or TSBA funds we don't get back. Great, great point. Anything else? Mr. Alder, I see he has passed a budget for the coming fiscal year, so that's great news. Move forward with confidence, knowing what the budget is going to be like.
Glad to have that done.
No, that's, that's good. That's good. All right. Always standing, gentlemen. Thank you.